Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the May 19th, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. As the hour is 5:30, I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first order business this evening is hopefully going into non-public for the next hour and 20 minutes or so, after which we will come out of non-public and conduct a board interview downstairs, and we'll be back for regular business at 7 o'clock. So with that, I entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32L.
Sub moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Slockman Gilman.
Aye.
Slockman Chartran.
Aye.
Slockman Cohen.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. The board will be going into non-public.
For this week's report. The fish are back in Exeter. Eagle Scout installs flag retirement box. The farmer's market returns to Swayze. Police Department to host bike rodeo. Spring Creations fill the Town Hall Art Gallery. And Exeter celebrates Municipal Clerks Week. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread the word about the show and all things Exeter. For our first segment, a sure sign of spring. The fish have returned to Exeter as part of the annual river herring migration season. Dan Monchek has more on why the fish do it.
This time of year, if you take a look into the Squam Scott River, you can see hundreds of fish pressed right up against each other, making it seem like there's more fish than water. These fish are known as alewives, and long before people inhabited the town of Exeter, alewives have annually migrated from the saltwater of the Atlantic Ocean to the freshwater of the Exeter River where they spawn. To celebrate the alewives coming back to Exeter, the Conservation Commission is hosting the 2025 Alewife Festival. This Saturday, May 10th, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., you can come to Town Hall where all the festivities will take place. At the festival, you can learn about the secret water cleaning skills of native oysters, learn how to support pollinators, play covert cornhole, and even touch a fish. For more information about the event, you can visit the link below. In addition to the festival, the Conservation Commission has a live underwater alewife cam that brings you up close and personal with the fish. The webcam can be found right here on our YouTube channel at Exeter TV.
Late last month, a flag retirement box was installed in front of the town office. We met up with Eagle Scout candidate James Haney as the project wrapped up to learn more.
On Thursday, April 30th, a small crowd gathered outside the town offices as Eagle Scout candidate James Haney and troop 323 were delivering an important addition to the downtown.
We have a flag retirement box where people can place their old, worn, faded, ripped American flags in there. And basically, when they place them in there, we will collect them and properly dispose and retire the flags like our flags, like the flags should be of our nation.
The process of installing the flag box started when he presented the idea to the select board for approval.
Well, we always enjoy hearing the Eagle Scout projects because that's one of their duties is to give something back to the community that's lasting and reminds us of our national pride, our town pride, you know, community service.
Through this project, residents and visitors alike now have a convenient way to properly retire their flags. One of James' hopes in doing this project is that not only serves as a place where people can retire the flags, but that it can remind people about the reverence we should have for old glory.
It's our nation's flag. It's the symbol of our nation. And basically, it should be treated with the utmost respect. And one of those main things is not letting it touch the ground. That's a very common one. But also properly retiring it, which is a well-known, but most people don't really know how to do that. It's the proper way to do it is to burn the flag. And on top of the box, actually, there's a QR code which you scan, and it has a bunch of information about that, how to properly retire a flag, how to properly respect a flag, and then also information about our troop.
James got the idea when driving around Exeter and seeing the state of some of the flags hung around town.
One of the main reasons I did this is going through Exeter, there's a lot of worn, torn, faded American flags, and it just doesn't really symbolize and represent our country and our nation. And doing this, it gives back to our community by making the flags all around in our town look better because all those worn flags will be gone, but also it represents our nation better, too.
The flag retirement drop box is now available and open to deposits outside the town offices located at 10 Front Street in downtown Exeter.
Seacoast Eat Local's Exeter's Farmers Market is back in Swayze Parkway. We went down to the first day of the season to have a look for ourselves.
After a long and cold winter, the farmer's market has finally made its way back to Exeter. With a wide variety of activities and products, there's a little bit of something for everyone.
You can expect to see meat, drinks, produce, crafts, a wide variety of things here, local to the community.
From now until October 30th, you can come to Swayze Parkway every Thursday between 2:30 and 6 p.m. to enjoy what the market has to offer.
A special thank you to all the community members and the vendors, the sponsors, the local organizations that support us in making this happen and show up year after year, so we can show up for the community, too.
If you're interested in learning more about the farmer's market, you can head over to seacoasteatlocal.org/exeter.
The police department is hosting its annual bike rodeo later this month. I met up with Detective Bruce Page to learn more about the event.
Hi, everybody. I'm Detective Page from the Exeter Police Department. We want to invite everybody out for our annual bike rodeo, which is going to be held on May 24th this year, from 9 to 11, behind the Lincoln Street School. We've got some awesome bikes that are going to be raffled off this year, courtesy of the Service Credit Union. They purchased these from Philbrook Sport in Dover. Exeter Hospital is going to be there. They'll be checking helmets. We've got a ton of helmets to give away to the kids, got some small sizes. And Exeter Fire Department is a huge helper at this. They'll be checking your bikes and to make sure they're roadworthy. We're going to have all kinds of teeter totters and ramps and cool stuff for the kids to go in. And we're going to, most importantly, we're going to teach bike safety to the kids that day. So hope to see everybody, May 24th, 9 to 11, behind the Lincoln Street School.
Spring is in the air in the Exeter Town Hall Art Gallery with the current show organized by the Seacoast Artists Association. The Seacoast Artists Association returns to the Exeter Town Hall to bring you Primavera, The Art of Spring, a limited-time gallery exhibit featuring a whole mix of paintings and photographs from a wide range of artists and creatives in all sorts of different styles and processes. The event has already begun, but we'll be having a second Friday reception today, May 9th, starting at 4 p.m. till 6 p.m., with a special musical performance by Dacha and Savva Thurber on violin. Proceeds made during this exhibition will go towards benefiting the Seacoast Artists Association Fund, a scholarship program used to help benefit artistic members of the community. The gallery will be open May 9th through the 11th, and the 17th to the 18th, from noon to 4 p.m. Come down, get a taste of spring, and appreciate the work and talent put into making a good art show. And for our last segment, the town has been celebrating Municipal Clerks Week to recognize the importance of one of the oldest public professions in government worldwide. Bob went over to speak with the clerks to learn more about their role in Exeter.
When you need something done in town, the first stop is always the town clerk's office. No, it's not in the town hall. It's in the town offices across the street. Hidden in the back of the building is perhaps the most front-facing department the town has. Stopping by, you'll be sure to be greeted with a smile.
Hi there, how am I helping today?
Or even a silent greeting from Lori for those who speak sign language. At the helm of this department is Andy Kohler, who was elected to the position of town clerk back in 2012, but she's been working in the department since 2003.
I actually fell into it, I came to work in 2003 as a part-time employee for our then-town clerk, Linda Hartson. Two years before she retired, she made me the deputy because I did live in town. And then after that, she told me she was going to retire, so she started grooming me to be the town clerk. So that's how I got into it. And the first day that I was employed here, my first day at work was at the 2003 town election. I was a ballot clerk, all day.
By Andy's side is Deputy Town Clerk Jennifer Shute, who has been working in the office for over six years, starting as the deputy in 2023.
My role is to support Andy and all of the things that she does, and then to support the rest of the office to make sure that it's running smoothly, and there's something new to learn every single day.
The department is responsible for many of the town's most crucial functions. The clerks handle daily transactions for car registrations, dog licenses, marriage certificates, and other vital records. In their archives, they take care of many documents, some dating back to the founding of Exeter in the 1600s. While it's one of the oldest professions in government, they don't shy away from making changes and using technology to make improvements, whether it's with elections or with their daily responsibilities.
I had a to-do list. I wanted to do credit cards. I wanted to remodel the office to make it more convenient for the customers and our employees ergonomically. I've added the fishing license, the OHRV, boat licensing, we do all that. That was new. And then the technology for voting, I mean, the poll pads. And now we're going to get new voting machines, new tabulators that will count the ballots.
The polling pads for voter check-ins have greatly reduced the wait times for voters at elections, as residents can now go to any check-in table and use an ID to quickly check in to get their ballot.
I actually really love Election Day. I think it's a lot of fun to see all the people come out to vote, and everybody's usually very passionate about whichever side they're on, so it's always nice to kind of have those fun conversations. There's so much to learn. Everything is governed by law, so you have to be very mindful that you're following the law. And those things can actually change from any given election, they can actually change day to day. So staying on top of all of that, there really is so much to learn as far as handling ballots, absentees, voters in person. I like all of it. I like the kind of fast pace and, you know, the movement and keeping track, and it really is a vital role.
But more than handling the day-to-day in the office and the importance of elections, the clerks serve as a crucial link between residents and the local government, as many stop by the town clerk's office.
When you want to find out information about the town, especially people who are just moving in, or you're not sure where to go, they always either call the town clerk's office because they will know, or they'll come in and see us.
We get all the questions. When's trick-or-treat? When is the rally downtown? All of the things that maybe don't come out of our office, but we're the first one. Hey, let me jump on Google. We get calls for phone numbers. Hey, do you know a business in town?
So we're like the hub of the town. So any information that you need, you can come in to see us, and we will try our best to guide you in the right, to the right spot.
That's my favorite part of the job, is getting to meet and talk to all of the residents and helping them. We have a lot of new people that have come to town, so kind of hearing their stories, and then even the people who've lived here for years. Sometimes we see them, you know, every other month, and sometimes we just see them one time a year, so.
So whether you need to register your car, buy a sticker for the transfer station, or if you just have a question, stop by the town clerk's office, and they're sure to do their best to help.
A huge thank you to the team in the town clerk's office, Lori, Harmony, Jennifer, and Andy. Thank you for all that you do to help keep the town functioning. And that does it for this week's report. But before you go, if you blinked, you may have missed it. Back in February, the zoning board approved a developer's plans to build four townhouse-style resident units at 46 Main Street. Last weekend, crews quickly demolished the auto body shop, which has been on the site since 1960s to make way for construction. Want to stay in the know about what projects are proposed or approved in Exeter? Exeter TV has you covered from gavel to gavel, coverage of town meetings. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. Head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on May 23rd for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter.
For this week's report. Residents blast off for one last time at Planet Playground. Designs for Pearpoint Park are discussed. The Exeter Art Walk is back. The Exeter Lions Club helps children with free eye screenings. And CSX Railway Works.
For this week's report. The fish are back in Exeter. Eagle Scout installs flag retirement box. The farmer's market returns to Swayze. Police Department to host bike rodeo. Spring Creations fill the Town Hall Art Gallery. And Exeter celebrates Municipal Clerks Week. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread the word about the show and all things Exeter. For our first segment, a sure sign of spring. The fish have returned to Exeter as part of the annual river herring migration season. Dan Monchek has more on why the fish do it.
This time of year, if you take a look into the Squam Scott River, you can see hundreds of fish pressed right up against each other, making it seem like there's more fish than water. These fish are known as alewives, and long before people inhabited the town of Exeter, alewives have annually migrated from the saltwater of the Atlantic Ocean to the freshwater of the Exeter River where they spawn. To celebrate the alewives coming back to Exeter, the Conservation Commission is hosting the 2025 Alewife Festival. This Saturday, May 10th, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., you can come to Town Hall where all the festivities will take place. At the festival, you can learn about the secret water cleaning skills of native oysters, learn how to support pollinators, play covert cornhole, and even touch a fish. For more information about the event, you can visit the link below. In addition to the festival, the Conservation Commission has a live underwater alewife cam that brings you up close and personal with the fish. The webcam can be found right here on our YouTube channel at Exeter TV.
Late last month, a flag retirement box was installed in front of the town office. We met up with Eagle Scout candidate James Haney as the project wrapped up to learn more.
On Thursday, April 30th, a small crowd gathered outside the town offices as Eagle Scout candidate James Haney and troop 323 were delivering an important addition to the downtown.
We have a flag retirement box where people can place their old, worn, faded, ripped American flags in there. And basically, when they place them in there, we will collect them and properly dispose and retire the flags like our flags, like the flags should be of our nation.
The process of installing the flag box started when he presented the idea to the select board for approval.
Well, we always enjoy hearing the Eagle Scout projects because that's one of their duties is to give something back to the community that's lasting and reminds us of our national pride, our town pride, you know, community service.
Through this project, residents and visitors alike now have a convenient way to properly retire their flags. One of James' hopes in doing this project is that not only serves as a place where people can retire the flags, but that it can remind people about the reverence we should have for old glory.
It's our nation's flag. It's the symbol of our nation. And basically, it should be treated with the utmost respect. And one of those main things is not letting it touch the ground. That's a very common one. But also properly retiring it, which is a well-known, but most people don't really know how to do that. It's the proper way to do it is to burn the flag. And on top of the box, actually, there's a QR code which you scan, and it has a bunch of information about that, how to properly retire a flag, how to properly respect a flag, and then also information about our troop.
James got the idea when driving around Exeter and seeing the state of some of the flags hung around town.
One of the main reasons I did this is going through Exeter, there's a lot of worn, torn, faded American flags, and it just doesn't really symbolize and represent our country and our nation. And doing this, it gives back to our community by making the flags all around in our town look better because all those worn flags will be gone, but also it represents our nation better, too.
The flag retirement drop box is now available and open to deposits outside the town offices located at 10 Front Street in downtown Exeter.
Seacoast Eat Local's Exeter's Farmers Market is back in Swayze Parkway. We went down to the first day of the season to have a look for ourselves.
After a long and cold winter, the farmer's market has finally made its way back to Exeter. With a wide variety of activities and products, there's a little bit of something for everyone.
You can expect to see meat, drinks, produce, crafts, a wide variety of things here, local to the community.
From now until October 30th, you can come to Swayze Parkway every Thursday between 2:30 and 6 p.m. to enjoy what the market has to offer.
A special thank you to all the community members and the vendors, the sponsors, the local organizations that support us in making this happen and show up year after year, so we can show up for the community, too.
If you're interested in learning more about the farmer's market, you can head over to seacoasteatlocal.org/exeter.
The police department is hosting its annual bike rodeo later this month. I met up with Detective Bruce Page to learn more about the event.
Hi, everybody. I'm Detective Page from the Exeter Police Department. We want to invite everybody out for our annual bike rodeo, which is going to be held on May 24th this year, from 9 to 11, behind the Lincoln Street School. We've got some awesome bikes that are going to be raffled off this year, courtesy of the Service Credit Union. They purchased these from Philbrook Sport in Dover. Exeter Hospital is going to be there. They'll be checking helmets. We've got a ton of helmets to give away to the kids, got some small sizes. And Exeter Fire Department is a huge helper at this. They'll be checking your bikes and to make sure they're roadworthy. We're going to have all kinds of teeter totters and ramps and the cool stuff for the kids to go in. And we're going to, most importantly, we're going to teach bike safety to the kids that day. So hope to see everybody, May 24th, 9 to 11, behind the Lincoln Street School. So hope to see everybody, May 24th, 9:00 to 11:00 behind the Lincoln Street School.
Spring is in the air in the Exeter Town Hall Art Gallery with the current show organized by the Seacoast Artists Association. The Seacoast Artists Association returns to the Exeter Town Hall to bring you Primavera, the Art of Spring, a limited time gallery exhibit featuring a whole mix of paintings and photographs from a wide range of artists and creatives in all sorts of different styles and processes. The event has already begun, but we'll be having a second Friday reception today, May 9th, starting at 4:00 p.m. till 6:00 p.m. with a special musical performance by Dacha and Savathirber on violin. Proceeds made during this exhibition will go towards benefiting the Seacoast Artists Association Fund, a scholarship program used to help benefit artistic members of the community. The gallery will be open May 9th through the 11th and the 17th to the 18th from noon to 4:00 p.m. Come down, get a taste of spring, and appreciate the work and talent put into making a good art show. And for our last segment, the town has been celebrating Municipal Clerk's Week to recognize the importance of one of the oldest public professions in government worldwide. Bob went over to speak with the clerks to learn more about their role in Exeter.
When you need something done in town, the first stop is always the town clerk's office. No, it's not in the town hall. It's in the town offices across the street. Hidden in the back of the building is perhaps the most front-facing department the town has. Stopping by, you'll be sure to be greeted with a smile.
Hi there, how may I help you today?
Or even a silent greeting from Lori for those who speak sign language. At the helm of this department is Andy Kohler, who was elected to the position of town clerk back in 2012, but she's been working in the department since 2003.
I actually fell into it. I came to work in 2003 as a part-time employee for our then-town clerk, Linda Hartson. Two years before she retired, she made me the deputy because I did live in town. And then after that, she told me she was going to retire. So she started grooming me to be the town clerk. So that's how I got into it. And the first day that I was employed here, my first day at work was at the 2003 town election. I was a ballot clerk, all day.
By Andy's side is Deputy Town Clerk Jennifer Shute, who has been working in the office for over six years, starting as the deputy in 2023.
My role is to support Andy and all of the things that she does and then to support the rest of the office to make sure that it's running smoothly and there's something new to learn every single day.
The department is responsible for many of the town's most crucial functions. The clerks handle daily transactions for car registrations, dog licenses, marriage certificates, and other vital records. In their archives, they take care of many documents, some dating back to the founding of Exeter in the 1600s. While it's one of the oldest professions in government, they don't shy away from making changes and using technology to make improvements, whether it's with elections or with their daily responsibilities.
I had a to-do list. I wanted to do credit cards. I wanted to remodel the office to make it more convenient for the customers and our employees ergonomically. I've added the fishing license, the OHRV, boat licensing. We do all that. That was new. And then the technology for voting, I mean, the poll pads. And now we're going to get new voting machines, new tabulators that will count the ballots.
The polling pads for voter check-ins have greatly reduced the wait times for voters at elections as residents can now go to any check-in table and use an ID to quickly check in to get their ballot.
I actually really love Election Day. I think it's a lot of fun to see all the people come out to vote and everybody's usually very passionate about whichever side they're on. So it's always nice to kind of have those fun conversations. There's so much to learn. Everything is governed by law, so you have to be very mindful that you're following the law. And those things can actually change from any given election. They can actually change day to day. So staying on top of all of that, there really is so much to learn as far as handling ballots, absentees, voters in person. I like all of it. I like the kind of fast pace and, you know, the movement and keeping track. And it really is a vital role.
But more than handling the day to day in the office and the importance of elections, the clerks serve as a crucial link between residents and the local government, as many stop by the town clerk's office.
When you want to find out information about the town, especially people who are just moving in or you're not sure where to go, they always either call the town clerk's office because they will know, or they'll come in and see us.
We get all the questions. When's trick or treat? When is the rally downtown? All of the things that maybe don't come out of our office, but we're the first one. Hey, let me jump on Google. We get calls for phone numbers. Hey, do you know a business in town?
So we're like the hub of the town. So any information that you need, you can come in to see us and we will try our best to guide you in the right, to the right spot.
That's my favorite part of the job is getting to meet and talk to all of the residents and helping them. We have a lot of new people that have come to town. So kind of hearing their stories and then even the people who've lived here for years. Sometimes we see them, you know, every other month and sometimes we just see them one time a year, so.
So whether you need to register your car, buy a sticker for the transfer station, or if you just have a question, stop by the town clerk's office and they're sure to do their best to help.
A huge thank you to the team in the town clerk's office. Lori, Harmony, Jennifer, and Andy. Thank you for all that you do to help keep the town functioning. And that does it for this week's report. But before you go, if you blinked, you may have missed it. Back in February, the zoning board approved a developer's plans to build four townhouse-style resident units at 46 Main Street. Last weekend, crews quickly demolished the auto body shop, which has been on the site since 1960s to make way for construction. Want to stay in the know about what projects are proposed or approved in Exeter? Exeter TV has you covered from gavel to gavel coverage of town meetings. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. Head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other local news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on May 23rd for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter.
For this week's report. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels.
Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel.
If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16
and can be found on Channel 8.
With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels.
Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel.
If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
And we will start our regular business meeting. First order of business this evening is a proclamation that I'd ask you, Madam Clerk, if you would read.
I will.
Thank you.
Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, a proclamation. A myotrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neogenitive degenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with their muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas thousands of new ALS cases reported every year, estimates show that every 90 minutes someone is diagnosed with and someone passes away from ALS. And whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years from the time of diagnosis. And whereas, the exact causes of ALS are unknown and there is no known cure for ALS. And whereas, people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And whereas, securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. And whereas, clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas, the ALS Association is the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally and has committed more than $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and 18 other countries. And whereas, ALS Awareness Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledge the impact this disease has on individuals and their families, and support research to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, our Exeter Select Board Chair does hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month within the town of Exeter, New Hampshire. All people are hereby called upon to support ALS research, advocate for increased funding, and stand in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease.
Thank you very much. Is this the?
It is.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Linda Frank. Felch, sorry. Who brought this to my attention, and I would ask that she be given the proclamation.
Indeed. Thank you for writing to us. Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman. We also have a recognition this evening. One of our long-term volunteers here in town, Pam Jettum, received recognition earlier this afternoon in Concord, and you were there, Selectwoman Gilman, so I'll turn it over to you, please.
Yes, this is from the New Hampshire Commission on Aging. They every year do celebrate an older adult volunteer, and Ms. Jettum was an award winner this year. They select one volunteer from each county, so it's even more competitive, and we're very proud of the work that Pam's done. The Historical Society, the Heritage Commission, the Historic District Commission, the Qantas Club, the Keak Club, and most of all, the UFO Festival. So Pam, I don't know if you want to say anything, or we'll let you just be over there.
Well, thank you very much.
Come on up.
I've enjoyed this. It's basically because I just don't know how to say no. Especially to Bill Campbell, who showed up at my retirement party with an application for town boards.
So smart of him. Thanks, Bill Campbell. And thank you for all of your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Pam, and thank you for everything you've done through the years. Appreciate it.
No, I don't think I have to sit through this anymore. What you do.
Congratulations.
You want to volunteer?
Thank you very much.
Want to volunteer up here?
Next on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to have comment to the Select Board to come forward. We do ask that if your comment is relative to an agenda item, you wait until that item comes up on the agenda, so I'll pause briefly. And if you could just, good evening, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sally Ward, 72 Park Street. So my, I have questions and concerns, I'll try to be brief. This concerns the Park Street Bridge. So as everyone knows, the bridge has been out for some time. We haven't had an update on the websites for two months, and I did contact Public Works and asked, what is the update? And they said, we haven't heard anything from the state. I recognize, we all recognize, that it's a state project, so we don't, we, the town, don't have direct control over it, but my concern is input on the part of the town, and whether that is via the Select Board or via some community forum, I have concerns about what the future holds, what will happen with the bridge. And I was motivated to come to the Select Board at this particular time because I heard a rumor last week that the bridge is going to be taken down. And my first thought was, well, what the heck would that look like? And so, is it just a rumor? Do we have any information about what's going to happen? If the bridge is taken down, what would it look like? I think it would be very undesirable to take rid of that, to get rid of that community asset for transportation purposes, pedestrian purposes, and for historical purposes. So it might just be a rumor, I hope that's not the case, but my question, I guess, is what is the opportunity for any sort of input from the town to the state? And is there any information about when something will be done? And before it's a fait accompli, what can we as residents or the Select Board do about it? So I have concerns in general about the communication about it and our input. Also, I have concerns about the traffic pattern. The traffic pattern right now is, there's increased traffic, as you know, on Wadley, on Salem, and on Oak Street, and those are streets that have been, you know, sleepy little residential streets, and there's a great deal of traffic now. If the bridge were to disappear, that would be a permanent situation, which I think would be very undesirable. So what do we know, and what kind of input can we have?
Sure, so let's start with the first question. The rumor, that's the first that I'm hearing of that. Mr. Dean, do you have any information about removal? Because I haven't heard anything.
No.
So, okay.
I haven't heard removal.
Just as importantly, you know, I will vow to reach out to the Public Works Director and see if we can't get him on the agenda. We have three meetings in June, and I'd like to do it when it makes sense for him to be able to speak and have something of substance to say, and that would allow folks from the community to come and ask questions or have a discussion. Again, where it's a state job, you know, I don't know how much information he'll have that we don't already have, or I don't know, you know, what more he can do, but certainly to take input from the community at a Select Board meeting and then go from there. I mean, in the short term, that's what we can do.
That would be great.
Okay, and I can reach out to you and let you know what meeting that would be in June?
Sure.
Okay, yes.
When you have that conversation, could you ask Mr. Cronin if there's a relationship between CSX and the state? If there's some?
Yes, of course.
Difficulty there?
Yeah.
CSX being the railroad owner.
Yep. Great, thank you very much. And I'm just writing myself a note because I do forget things. Is there any other public comment this evening? Let's see if anyone's online.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night. If there's no other public comment, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. This was from our Select Board Regular Meeting of May 12, 2025. I'd ask the board if there are any revisions or amendments to the minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I have the, your forbearance? There's some questions and comments I made during our consideration of the second reading of the public parking, and I want to review what I said and potentially revise the minutes, but I haven't done that yet, so.
Okay, is the board okay tabling the minutes until our next meeting on June 2nd?
I'll move to table till June 2nd.
I appreciate the consideration of the board.
There's a motion to table the minutes till June 2nd, is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
Again, thank you all.
Thank you. This evening, we interviewed Amanda Kelly for an open voting position on the Historic District Commission, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Amanda Kelly as a voting member on the Historic District Commission for a term to expire April 2028.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Amanda, for volunteering. And we'll jump into our discussion items, and we need to open a public hearing. The board will be here with me in one moment. This evening, we are conducting a public hearing for the Foam Recycling Coalition grant. I would entertain a motion at this time to open the public hearing under RSA 31:95B3A.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The public hearing is open, and we have Kristin Murphy here, our Conservation and Sustainability Planner, to discuss the grant. Good evening.
Good evening. As you know, there was a warrant article that was passed at the March Town Meeting in support of funding for purchasing a Styrofoam densifier unit. This unit would be located at the transfer station. That warrant article was contingent on securing a $50,000 grant. The unit itself is $80,000, so it would be $50,000 from a grant funding source plus $30,000 town allocation. I applied for a grant from the Foam Recycling Coalition and did receive that grant. Notice- and did receive that grant, noticed that we were awarded that grant. And so I'm here tonight to hold the public hearing because it's more than $10,000, and hopefully receive your recommendation for executing the necessary paperwork.
Fantastic. Any questions?
Just congratulations. This is wonderful.
Yeah.
Glad you got the grant.
Me too. I think it will be a really great program locally to us. We have potential of diverting a lot of styrofoam from our waste stream. And then if we do continue, which I hope, I believe we will, once we've got the process down, expand it to a regional program, we have really a dramatic opportunity to have regional impact, which is huge when we all share the same landfill.
I'm looking forward to future reports on how you're progressing with that.
Mr. Chartrand.
First of all, I want to thank you, Kristin. You were the one that discovered this opportunity and brought it to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And then with their work and your work, we brought it to the Budget Recommendation Committee and with our Select Board Chair's oomph behind it, because I know you were an early supporter. It was put through the BRC with the contingent on this grant coming through. So a whole bunch of folks had a lot to do with this happening. And I just want to congratulate them all on making this happen and making Exeter a leader on this issue. So great work by you, great work by Sustainability Advisory, great work by our Chair.
The BRC?
And the BRC, yes.
And the voters.
And the voters, yes.
And ultimately, the voters, right.
Kristin, this is a win-win, and it's one of those where it was a, you know, low-risk, you know, high-gain opportunity. The warrant article, and appreciative of the voters, appreciative of all the work that you did to educate the voters, as well as the Sustainability Committee. And, but I just, I'm not going to repeat what Selectwoman Chartrand said, but just want to highlight how you always look for every possible way to get a grant or some sort of funding source, and even identifying, you know, initiatives like this that ultimately, you know, are going to improve our way of life, but also, you know, bring in possibly some revenue. So thank you, and congratulations to you, so.
Thank you.
We do have an open public hearing, so I would ask if there are any members of the public that wish to comment or ask any questions. And there's nobody online, so seeing none, I would entertain a motion first to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. If there are no other questions or comments from the Board, I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager or their designee acting on the Select Board's behalf to execute any and all related agreements for acceptance of grant funding in support of the foam densifier purchase.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second.
Yep, Dan and Molly.
Wonderful. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll jump into our regular business at this time. And we have a follow-up on the application for a charitable exemption from Hero Pups. There's a memo from Mr. Stevens, our Finance Director, that's in our file. And I know that you're back to address the Board as well. So, Mr. Stevens, did you first want to walk through your memo, and then we'll invite you up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I did prepare a memo for the packet. I was asked to take a look at this after the April 28 meeting that you had, where there was some questions and confusion, and has assessing reports up to the town manager through Finance. It made sense for me to take a look at this with assessing and then put some thoughts together. There's new information up to and including today from the applicant, so that's good news. So I'll just take you quickly through what the memo lays out and what Council provided, and then where we stand at this point. And I'll, just to wrap it up, there were some questions and confusion around our process internally that I wanted the opportunity to clarify as well.
Thank you.
So you have the memo. The long and short of it is that the applicant at the last meeting on the 28th provided a letter and some comments about, you know, the wide net and good that the organization does for the public, and wanted us to consider that. So we brought that to Council, asked them to consider that, had some discussion with Council about past court cases around charitable exemptions, questions that I had about, you know, why not this or that. In the end, Council's advice on the matter didn't change, deny the application for charitable. Their reasoning was fairly straightforward in the matter. Essentially, the purpose for which the organization is established in the eyes of the state did not rise to a charitable purpose that we could or our Council could defend on our behalf if it went before the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. They cautioned that the DRA is currently cracking down on exemptions given and looking at them more closely. And they were concerned about their ability to defend that exemption grant if it were given. Council did suggest that an easy fix for this was for the applicant to amend their articles of incorporation to reflect what it is they say they do on the property and the good that they provide. And that if that were the case, the amendment was made with the state, that perhaps then that would be a more charitable, we could provide the charitable exemption to the applicant. I, but it was out today, but I looked at my email later in the day, and I realized, or I provided an email showing that the applicant had actually filed amended articles this morning with the state. I forwarded, or we forwarded the, those articles along with the most recent 990 to Council and are awaiting their reply. So at this point, I think we're on the right track. I just, you know, given Council's comments about how the state is looking at exemptions and Hergens turn about the ability to fend it, I would want to see them respond to what they've been provided before. I would advise you guys move forward with anything.
Ms. Barker, do you want to, do you have any other comment to make or anything to add?
Yeah, yes. I guess I do because I'm sitting down. So I watched the agenda and the packets coming out. I checked all last week. I got notice with, as soon as we got the 990s, I submitted them to, I'm not even sure who it went to, but I know you all got it. So it was mentioned that this would be heard tonight. So I watched for the packets, and I watched for the packets through the close of business on Friday. It was Saturday morning when the packet first showed up on the website. I did not check it Friday evening. So I did rearrange a whole lot of things, and I spent most of the day in Concord today with many different divisions, bureaus, and all of that. So I'm hoping that this will satisfy the next hurdle that I've been given to go over.
So just a little bit more information
Please.
for everybody. So the timeline on this is you all have to grant or deny the application before the tax rate is set this year. So that's the broad schedule we're working under. In my memo, I had suggested July 1 because July 1 is when the first tax bill is due for the year. And it seemed like enough time, based on our review of the state site, to do this kind of work. So it's great that the applicant jumped in and went through these hoops today. But we do have some time to see how this plays out and get it right.
So this was first, this memo and bringing you back before the Board, or bringing the request back before the Board, was discussed late Thursday afternoon. We picked this date because of what Mr. Stevens just said and wanted to give you the appropriate amount of time to be able to get whatever you needed done, done. I apologize that it wasn't communicated to you on Friday, that we would be taking this up. But the reason we took it up today was to allow time for everybody to make sure that we could do what we could do. And that's, so that, I'll take responsibility for you not being notified, but the intent was to let you know on Friday. So I apologize for that. So, Mr. Stevens, is there anything more that we need to wait on before taking this up?
Not as it relates to this application. We'll wait for Council to respond.
Right.
I know that I got an out-of-office email when I wrote to her when I got back today. So I don't expect it'll be in the next few days. But as I said, the timeline, we've got some time.
Okay. Mr. Chartrand.
When you were working with the state today, did they give you a sense of how quickly they would act?
Oh, they were very interested in this. I got shuffled. I just went to the Corporation Division to do the amendment to the Articles of Incorporation.
Is that at the Secretary of State's office?
Yeah, one of those buildings. But then they take, somebody said I should go talk to a Bureau of something, and they, we went through back. I couldn't find my car.
Did they give you a sense of how quickly they will act?
Well, the Articles of Incorporation, those are already done.
Oh, okay.
She did everything that she needed to do. We're waiting for Council to get back to us, and I think
So everything with the state is done?
Yes.
Great.
And one thing Mr. Stevens brought up is that, and this is what's sort of red flagged this Thursday afternoon when we were having our discussion, is that the state is vigorously investigating exemptions through towns. And we just want to make sure that we get it right for the town and for you, and make sure the precedent's not being set. And, you know, that was my concern. But no, Ms. Barker's done what she needs to do. We're waiting for Council, who is out of the office.
And so this will be on another agenda?
We, as soon as we hear from Council, you heard me say earlier, we have three meetings in June. As soon as Mr. Stevens tells me that we have the information that we need, we will put this on the agenda, and I will personally reach out to you.
Second time I've heard that.
No, I said this time, I will personally reach out to you. My understanding was that you were going to be contacted Friday, and I take responsibility for that. So I'm telling you that I will personally reach out to you when we have that on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just to be clear about timing, the agendas are set on Friday. So it is late in the week. It wasn't like it was sitting there all week and then.
I believe it.
But he's going to take care of it.
I'll make it right.
The reality is that I worked this back and forth with the lawyers last week. You know, it didn't just happen, and I got an answer. I had, well, what about this? And, you know, I was trying to sort of play this side of the coin and let, you know, play devil's advocate so we didn't end up in a situation where we hadn't stress-tested the issue. And that just took time. And we had this meeting tonight. And in the interest of not holding up the applicant any longer, it seemed to make sense to get it on the agenda.
Did you want to address the other concerns that we had, the Board had?
Yeah, I mean, those raised my spidey senses as well, as you say. On that, when we were talking, so three items came up. There was a reference to a 2013 990 in the meeting, but we had the 2023, and I think maybe we just said 13, and we meant to say 23, and this.
I, so I misspoke that.
That's right.
It was written on my sheet and in the documents as 2020. I just misspoke.
So we had.
When you said it, I thought maybe you misspoke, but it was me. So my apologies.
And the applicant is, Laura, has actually filed their 2024 by 5:15, which was the due date. And we gave that to Council as well. The information sheet that was provided to Laura, that was from Northampton. The information on it is canned, and it relates to what the state rules are. When do I have to file my A9? When do I have to file my A12? So it was, I believe it was actually done by MRI, our assessing consultant. So she grabbed it, put it, this year she put it on our letterhead. I think last year she just gave you the form from Northampton.
Last year, it was rye, I believe.
Yeah, perhaps. Anyway, we took the information. You know, Janet realized that it had a Northampton email address on it. That was the reference to Northampton. But all the data on it related to the state's timeline and appropriate documents to file. So we have made that our own, quote-unquote, now. And we've also put that language on a page on our website for anybody in the future, doesn't have to go through that hoop-jumping. They can still see it.
So just to be clear, our contractor, MRI, did not give us a town-specific resource? They just pulled a resource?
They didn't, they didn't give us any resource. We went and got it from another town that they had probably generated for that town. And when we brought it in, because it's just generic information, we just didn't update an email address right to so-and-so@northampton.com should you have a question. That was the piece, I believe, that was the reference to Northampton.
Have we done that now, though?
Oh, yes.
It's a town of Exeter. Thank you.
And then the last was the reference to the outdated RSA. Ms. Gilman brought that up. That was a typo that only showed up in a couple different places. I think it was 7632. It should have been 72, I'm sorry. It referenced 7623. It should have been 7223. I think it showed up in your packet. And I'm not sure where else it showed up, but it wasn't anywhere. Like in that information sheet I just referred to, it's all 7223, which is the right RSA for charitable exemptions in the state of Hampshire. So that was a typo on our part as well. And those are the three items.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Board of either Ms. Barker or Mr. Stevens? I'm looking real quick, just to make sure I have your contact information. Yeah, I do. Okay. You'll hear from me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey.
Yep.
So we don't need a table? Because it's not on, it's not on, it has its own memo. It's not on my list. I checked.
Yeah.
So we're just, we don't need to motion a table? We're all set?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Dean, do you want to speak briefly to the tax collector's warrant?
Yes, so this is the first-half tax warrant. It was just produced by the Tax Office today, and it's ready to be signed by the Board.
Are there any questions on the warrant? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's warrant for the first half of the 2025 year in the amount of $32,350,115.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion passes. Thank you. And the warrant is here for us to sign later. Madam Clerk.
Okay. So I'm going to start with the page that we had for handout for tonight, okay? So abatement, map 87, lot 14, unit 24B, in the amount of $139.51 for the tax year 2022. And I should say, I move for the abatement.
Second.
Thank you.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. I'll make that track now. Somebody keeps getting crafty. Now I have a checkbox, too. Continue on with the abatements. I move for map 63, lot 41, unit 4, for the amount of $811.22 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Map 104, lot 79, unit 615, in the amount of $396.72 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I need to have a ruler here. Okay. Map 104, lot 79, unit 610, in the amount of $386.04 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
2024, thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 64, lot 105, unit 95, in the amount of $514.13 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 64, lot 105, unit 81, in the amount of $419.84 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 104, lot 79, unit 234, in the amount of $560.39 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 95, lot 64, unit 290, in the amount of $405.61 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 95, lot 64, unit 302, in the amount of $681.36 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 95, lot 64, unit 335, in the amount of $202.81 tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 64, lot 105, unit 73, in the amount of $823.68 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 104, lot 79, unit 950, in the amount of $455.42 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 108, lot 10, in the amount of $1,263.92 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 19, lot 16, unit 42, in the amount of $412.73 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a few denials. I can do those all at once, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going down to map 95, lot 64, unit 392, in the amount of 20-
Nope, it's the one above it.
The denial. I was skipping over it.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna start over. Map 95, lot 64, unit 392, in the amount of $21.35 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 95, lot 64, unit 350, in the amount of $124.53 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 28, lot 20, in the amount of $875.27 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 54, lot 4, unit 117, in the amount of $124.53 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Map 87, lot 14, unit 5B, in the amount of $586 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 denials. First, map 21, lot 25. Second is map 95, lot 64, unit 39-
Nope, next one down.
All right. Joanna, let me start over.
1047.
Yeah, just, sorry, just bear with me. I just want to get, I'm just starting over. Map 21, lot 1, nope, lot 25. I should probably just do them singly from this point forward, but, okay. Map 104, lot 79, unit 402. Map 64, lot 105, unit 24. Map 72, lot 187. Map 19, lot 16, unit 16. All denials and all for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous?
Okay. And then I have an interest refund request for map 90, lot 29. I don't know why there's an amount and a denial, so I'm just gonna say for the tax year 2024, be denied.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I have discussion. On interest refunds, don't we usually get the background documentation?
Yes, you should have that.
I don't have it in my packet.
No.
Not in the folder? Okay, we'll have to follow up on that if you want to.
Do you want me to withdraw and-
Please.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my motion for map 90, lot 29.
I withdraw my second.
Thank you. And then we already did the tax warrant.
Yes.
Yay, I'm done.
Okay. We'll take that up June 2nd, please?
Yes.
Just, great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, please.
So just a few things this week. One was that I was able to go to a Primex conference last week. It was very value-added. Wanted to say that it was a good, good conference and enjoyed it, so.
Good.
Dave Sharple should be in on June 2nd to give an update on the police and fire substation project. That is coming up. Also, we were, we did receive the review appraisal for the groundwater easement, so we'll be able to be talking about that at one of your subsequent meetings. We're continuing to recruit for the HR director position. We're getting applications in daily on that, so that's moving forward. The DPW had their new dump truck number 33 delivered this week, so they're in the process of registering that. That was a vote at town meeting this past year. And then the Yale White Festival went indoors and was a big success on May 10th. That was a great event. Swayze Coastal Resilient Grant proposals are due June 2nd and will be opened at the June 2nd Select Board meeting. So that's coming up. And Rocking Road Widening Project is going to get a June start when school gets out.
Okay. Good news.
That's my list.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, Select Board Committee report. Selectwoman Gilman, please.
I had no meetings. I had to cancel going to one because I had an appointment. HDC was canceled. I did meet with students from PEA to talk about sidewalks, crossings, those, I think, Selectwoman Belanger had gone through the checklist from the accessibility forum and she had some questions about how that would work and did I like the ones on Front Street. And then the other thing is, I don't know if any of you have been following House Bill 613. This is one that lets there be a second question about default bill, default budgets on the warrant. So you have the typical one that says, we're proposing this budget. If this budget fails, the second one is, first, you know, last year's budget minus and plus. The second one would let just a flat number be determined for the budget, for the default budget. That got tabled in the Senate. However, the Senate has been known to whip things off the table and stick them in the budget anyway, so I'm, I'm watching that one. And I'm also organizing a budget or a town hall kind of thing. So since the Senate's been working on it more, there's a little bit more news to, to bring. So I'm gonna get the fellow from the nonpartisan New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute come walk us through what's going on.
Get the save the date out as soon as you have one.
Yep.
Please.
Please.
Thank you very much for your update. Selectwoman Belanger.
I have no report.
I don't believe it.
It's only been a week.
I know, but she's-
I have no report.
Okay, well, we'll catch you on the 2nd.
Maybe.
And then Selectwoman Cowan.
Same, a report.
Selectwoman Charter.
I do have a report. I attended three meetings last week. I had a Conservation Commission meeting on Tuesday. Yeah, it was all on me last week. Tuesday, Concom met. We had amazing talk about trail maintenance and town forests and other public access lands, whether it's land set aside for conservation or actually owned by the town. It was, it was a great meeting. We also had a joint Sustainability Advisory Committee, Energy Committee meeting on Wednesday at 3:30. This is the second annual, we can now say annual. We did it last year, I think in March or April, and this year we did it in May. It was co-chaired by Sustainability Advisory Chair Denise Short. And I think Cliff is the chair of the Energy Committee.
Vice chair this year.
He's vice chair, because Amy couldn't make it, right? But Denise and Amy Farnham, the chair, had done amazing prep work for this joint meeting and it was very productive. And lots of great conversation about, you know, joint initiatives and ways that we can help each other supporting individual projects. For instance, the, the Energy Window Project, what's it called?
Window Dressers.
Window Dressers. Ways to support the Energy Committee with Window Dressers. And we also heaped praise on Kristin Murphy, who is the staff-side support for both those committees, so. And then finally, that informal train station committee met again at the library on Thursday at 1:00 PM. So those were my meetings last week.
Was that the joint energy and sustainability, was that taped?
I don't think it was. We were not in a format that would lend to-
Got it. Understood.
Yeah. But it was a, it was a good group that was there. Both Stephanie Marshall and Jim Brailing were there, one of Exeter's power couples. And as I said, Denise and Cliff ran the meeting together and a couple people from Energy whose names I can't recall and from Sustainability, Chetan Apparmo was there as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
So it was a great meeting.
Thank you. I, I had two meetings, but before that, Mr. Dean, thinking of energy and sustainability, are we able to confirm next Friday?
For-
The Array?
Yes.
Would you like to announce that?
Yeah, so we are going to have representatives and senators here to kick off the solar array dedication.
Next Friday, May 30?
May 30.
What time?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock, yes.
Out at the transfer station?
At the transfer station.
I will be there with my fellows.
We'll be, we'll be live shortly with the solar-
Thank you for bringing that up.
Can we get an email out to the board just as a reminder?
Yes, please.
And let Dave know that we'll be there.
So this is the 23rd at 8:30?
No, the 30th.
The 30th.
Where's it gonna be?
Transfer station.
So 30th at 8:30?
No, at 11 o'clock.
At 11 o'clock.
I'm gonna get this one.
That's why we need the email.
Yeah, May 30th, 11 a.m., transfer station.
And we're going live.
Dan, I'll pick you up.
We're going live.
Solar Ray. Exeter TV will be there?
Yes.
Can I bring my composting at the same time?
Yes.
Yes.
11 o'clock. I hope I can do it.
Because the transfer stations open on Fridays.
Yes.
Yeah, my understanding is-
Invited several dignitaries to attend the event.
It's exciting.
Yes.
Send my deepest appreciation for everybody doing all of this work.
Of course, certainly.
I will be in-
Did we make an invitation to anybody on the Public Utilities Commission?
That I don't know. I'd have to follow up on that one.
Thank you for that. Excellent news, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Sharple's called, so. So I wish Sally had stayed. The Tree Committee met on Tuesday morning and we went over, you know, usual agendas where we're gonna be planting the trees and who needs them and the tree inventory and working with Greg and Parks and Rec. But what was really interesting about this meeting is that there was a representative from Unitil there. There's always a representative from Unitil, but this individual is actually a third party outsourced by Unitil that actually removes damaged trees. And he had four town trees that need to be taken down because they are not well and they are posing a hazard. And we had a member of our Public Works Department there, Kirk Skamen, who's the highway-
Foreman.
Foreman. And of course, we have a tree ordinance that this Select Board passed after three hearings. And in the tree ordinance, any removal of public trees needs to go before the Tree Committee. So this was the first time I'd actually seen this happen.
And Kirk Skaman from Public Works recommended and endorsed the removal of the four trees. The Tree Committee finally unanimously voted to go ahead with approving the four trees, but not after an incredible vigorous question and answer with the member. It was, and you know, and he was a great guy. I believe he was from New York State. And he was the, I showed up in the Novak Room early to do some work at 8 o'clock, and he was already there. And he was very excited to be there. And I think if he wasn't in New York State, he'd probably be signing up to join the Tree Committee. That may have helped his cause a little bit.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
I think it is so awesome that there is now a process for this to happen, that it can't, doesn't just happen unilaterally. And one day, you know, the tree's there and the next day it's gone, and there's no citizen input. That Tree Committee is doing great work.
They really are.
The fact that there's now a process makes me so happy.
Those meetings aren't televised, but I'll say there was a second, there was a motion and a second made to approve the removal. But the Chair was, we needed some more discussion before those four trees.
I just want to see a process for reviewing Unitil's maiming of trees now. Not just removal, but maiming. But maybe I'm asking too much. I'm happy there's a removal process.
So I had that Pearpoint Park Committee met last Thursday at 5:00. They reviewed, there were three options based on what Jen Martel had done, member of the Committee and also member of the Planning Board. She'd been charged with putting together three designs. There was a survey that the Committee put out, and I believe there was between 500 and 600 respondents, so 550 or 560. So they are going to, they, the Committee, are going to come before this Select Board on June 30th with all three options, their recommendation of the three options. And Mr. Sharple's is going to work up, in his words, a very rough estimation, because I think at this point, that's the best that he can do. They're going to meet one more time in June. They have to reschedule their meeting due to the holiday, but they'll be coming before the Board on the 30th. So that's my report.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question that has to do with trees?
Please.
In our ordinances several bazillion years ago, we put in place one that about trees obstructing the river. And I believe it's a person whose tree falls into the river is responsible for removing it. But there are several trees between Kingston Road Bridge and the rail trestle that have fallen. And they've been like that for a long time. And we actually own the property that they're on. So I don't know if this is a question for the Conservation Commission or the Tree Committee, but, or Public Works. But it may be worth looking at removing them.
Yeah, they're in the river.
So, Mr. Dean, I think maybe we start with Public Works?
Yeah, and reviewing the river hazards policy.
Yep.
Yeah.
We did have a conversation about this at Concom in relation to Little River. And the state is very, I think DS, if I'm remembering this correctly, DS likes fallen trees to remain unless they're absolutely necessary to remove.
That is correct. That is their policy.
There is a bias on the part of the state towards not removing fallen trees.